Okay, we're on now and welcome. Kathy's coming up here. I'd like to welcome everybody to this June 12th, 2017 council meeting. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a member from Troop 507, Andrew Ross from the First Christian Church of Medina, and I think we have another gentleman. Are you here for also for this? Come on up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And state your name, because I didn't know, I don't know it.
Uh, David.
David, okay.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilbert. Colosar.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22nd, 2017, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the reading of the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening, and will have to again meet after the meeting. This is the first time in like 10 years we had to do that. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colesar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have a meeting scheduled, but there isn't a large item on the agenda tonight in reference to our fire services Medina Township, and we'll be, there'll be discussions about that here during the agenda, but that is it.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've held no meeting recently and I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and Sabots Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
And Emergent Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are going to have a meeting on June 20th to discuss the case management for the courts here at the municipal court, and that'll be at 6 o'clock following the budget meeting that we're going to have starting at 5:30.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several here. We have Finance Committee, we have 17-101, 2017 codification update, 17-102 budget amendment, 17-103 amending codified ordinance 33926 truck routes, 17-104 fire services contract with Medina Township, 17-105 expenditure over 15,000 for Wingfoot Commercial Tire, 17-106 job creation grant payment for Standard Food Corp., 17-107 fiscal year 2017 CDBG allocation grant application, 17-108 fiscal year 2016 ship private rehabilitation 4144 St. James Drive, 17-109 amending planning and zoning code chapter 1127, sections 112704 and 112705, 17-110 amending salaries and benefits code 3104 and accept job description tree care technician, 17-111 accept conservation easements for Champion Creek Restoration Project, 17-112 2017 concrete pavement general services program, 17-113 revised civil service rule 8K promotional probationary period, 17-16 amending salaries and benefits code cable TV assistant producer tech operations director, 17-118 then and now for legal fee payment. For the Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, we have 17-114 amending salaries and benefits code regarding first and second assistant fire chief positions, 17-115 amending salaries and benefits code section 3105 addition of two fire lieutenant positions, and 1717 curb side recycling program, Mr. Colesar. We have one item for Emergent Technologies Committee, 17-195 case management software for the Medina Municipal Court. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The pool grand reopening was Friday, June 2nd at about 10:00 a.m. I'd like to thank Armstrong and Drug Mart for providing free entrance to the first 100 attendees as well as a free lunch. The pool opening has been very well received by the community. During that opening, we had a special recognition of Macy Halleck and Robert Rieger for their efforts in getting the original pool funded and opened at that same location back in the 50s. The band concerts continue on Friday evenings at 8:30 p.m. This week's band concert, which is Friday, June 16th, the concert will be to commemorate Flag Day. The farmer's market each Saturday morning continues from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This Saturday, June 17th, along with the farmer's market, Main Street Medina will host the annual Pizza Palooza. They also have service agencies that'll be spread out around the square to share their programs and services that they provide, and it's also a good chance to try the various pizzas and vote for the, there's a vote for the best pizza in town. There were many activities and visitors going on on our square here of late and receiving many positive comments on the appearance of the square and the downtown as a whole. And last but not least, I'd like to invite Stephanie Mueller up to present a proclamation regarding Alzheimer's. Hi, Stephanie. So this is a city of Medina proclamation, and it states, whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, the most expensive disease in the United States, and the only cause of death in the top 10 in the United States that cannot be prevented, cured, or slowed, and whereas over 5 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's dementia, including more than 3,400 in Medina County, whereas the Alzheimer's Association is the world's leading volunteer health organization in Alzheimer's care, support, and research, with local efforts led by the Greater East Ohio Area Chapter, and whereas the month of June is Alzheimer's and brain awareness month for the purpose of spreading global awareness and building support for the Alzheimer's Association vision of a world without Alzheimer's disease, and whereas the Alzheimer's Association honors those facing the disease with strength, heart, and endurance on the longest day through a series of events held on and around the summer solstice, and furthermore, individuals, organizations, and businesses within the city of Medina have stepped up to make a difference in the awareness, impact, and fundraising success of the Alzheimer's Association, the Walk to End Alzheimer's, and the Longest Day. Now therefore, Identis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 21st, 2017, as the longest day, and encourage all residents to wear purple to help spread the global awareness and support of the Alzheimer's Association's vision of a world without Alzheimer's disease. I present this proclamation to you now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a budget meeting on Wednesday. I know everyone's excited about that.
We are.
Moving on with the rest.
Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Alexander Brookrecker, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report tonight. As requested by council, I have some updates on how the pool's been doing since we opened on the 27th. As of 3:30 today, we have officially $25,565 in revenue year-to-date. Included in that total is season passes of $13,430, daily admissions of $10,696, concession stand revenues of $1,369, and even two cabana rentals so far. The year-to-date totally, total daily admission of patrons is 677 so far. We sold 265 visit punch cards and have had 429 pass scans, which is members using the facility. So year-to-date, we have 80 season passes sold and 323 season pass holders. So fantastic job for the first two weeks. On a side note, we have also blocked two sexual offenders from using the facility with our new ID policy, which we have at the rec center also. That's for those of you who asked why we have the ID policy in place. Last update, the next rec advisory committee meeting is Thursday, August 17th, as our July meeting is canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rurality Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to share some general information. The Building Department is extremely busy with both construction and property maintenance code enforcement. Construction includes five new homes, five medical projects, two industrial projects, three large multifamily projects, and one commercial project. That ends my report.
Thank you. City Engineer, Mr. Patton.
Thank you. Updating our two major construction projects. West Smith, last week overnight, Wednesday night to Thursday morning, we poured the main line, the second main line pour on West Smith. This would be the northern lane or the westbound lane. This week, Wednesday or Thursday, weather depending, we'll be pouring the second main line pour on State Road. The contractor's actually a little bit ahead of schedule. We do anticipate being open as promised prior to the fair. North Court Street, there's been a lot of activity here recently. Contractor is paving the southbound lanes on 42 this week, also continuing to work on Reagan Parkway, both east and west, and Hillview Way. They anticipate flipping traffic, in other words, going from traffic now is using the east side of the road to the west side sometime in mid-July. I did want to mention, we had a number of complaints and comments about Reagan, the intersection of Reagan Parkway and Court Street. Unfortunately, during construction, there's just no way around it that there's can be no, there's no room for a left turn lane from Reagan on either direction to Court Street. So there is no left turn permitted. If you do make the left turn, you will get a ticket. There are signage up. We've added to the signage. We've taken the message board back there to let people know. We apologize for any frustration, but we appreciate your cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
I have no report. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Confirmation of Mayor's appointment, we have one for the Shade Tree Commission, Benjamin Yat, for a term expiring 12/31/2018.
Move to confirm the Mayor's appointment?
Second.
In discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll on the Mayor's appointment?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Notice of Communications and Petitions, there are none. Motion to appoint a delegate and an alternate to the Regional Council of Governments. And we have two of them. We have Mayor Hanwell, Dennis Hanwell, as the delegate, and Keith Durham as the alternate.
Move to appoint the delegate and alternate?
Second.
This is the motion deals with the appointing of a delegate and an alternate to the Rita Board. This is the change we're making from CCA, from our tax collector of CCA, to Rita, and it'll take effect starting January 1st of 2018. So this is one of the processes that we have to go through in order to move in that direction. Is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint a delegate and alternate? I assume you both want to serve? I hope so. Because we're pointing. All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the appointments?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public, we have admitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should report to front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public, we afford the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Bob Russell, and you need my address as well? Is that what you said?
Yes.
641 Tremaine Place, Medina. I wanted to take a moment here and thank you guys for the opportunity to address the City Council. I also want to take a moment to discuss the growing concern over Osborn Incorporated cement crushing at 795 South Progress and previous incidents that also involve the city in regards to this. In order to understand this concern, please allow me to address the history of this issue. Due to the Planning Commission allowing Osborn to establish their business at 795 Progress Drive, the HOA of Liberty Woods had to file a civil lawsuit to minimize the impact of Osborn's operations on the development. This resulted in 96 settlement agreement which clearly outlines how Osborn can operate. Unfortunately, this is something the citizens of Medina should not have been forced to do. The Planning Commission did not clearly take into account the negative impact this kind of an operation would have on 300 households, and this would not be an ideal spot for a bench plat, uh, batch, batch plant and gravel yard. In 2002, John Lon, the city law director, reported to the City Council that a concession from Osborn and the railroad was agreed upon, and the tracks behind the homes will no longer be used after October 31st. This report in the City Council minutes is disturbing because these tracks are allegedly still being used at different times throughout the day, including at night, according to the residents who can hear them on Jamestown and Braddock's Landing. Now, Mr. Coin has stated in an email to a resident of Liberty Woods that after they searched their records and asked John Lon if he remembered, we came up with nothing. In 2008, according to Mayor Hanwell, who spoke to me on the phone on 524, Osborn approached the city engineer and Mayor Jane Lever about starting a crushing operation. They did not see an issue with the request. After some time, the city engineer and the mayor approached Greg Hanan, the Community Development Director, and asked for his input on the crushing operation. According to Richard Busini, Vice President of Osborn, in the 523 Plain Dealer article, "We asked the service director if we needed a permit. He said we did not. He said the permission was all we needed, and we took him on his word." Mr. Hanan remained on the Community Development, remained as the Community Development Director for roughly five years after this arrangement. It is difficult to believe that it did not occur to Mr. Hanan once during these five years that Osborn needed to apply for a 1153.03 conditional zoning certificate to officially allow this heavy manufacturing operation to continue. Due to the city's giving permission to Osborn, a public hearing with the Planning Commission was negated, and proper due process was not adhered to, citizens and neighboring businesses were not able to address their concerns over this operation. Additionally, the opportunity to state the crushing operation is in a direct violation of the 96 settlement agreement, and the deed restrictions included in that document could never occur. It is also increasingly worrisome that Mr. Hanan has stated to the Plain Dealer in the article on 524 that he can't even recall the situation and declines to comment on the matter. Now, even though this operation has had a negative impact in the lives of families and 300 households and surrounding businesses for nearly a decade, the crushing continues. According to the current Community Development Director Jonathan Mendel in the 524 Medina Gazette article, "To be fair, we are allowing them to do that." I ask, how is it fair to the families that have to live next to this operation or to the businesses like Buckeye Activity Center, which operates youth gymnastic programs and has to keep their doors open for ventilation, Fuma International, Sterling Paper, or Fire Decks? They have to, they have had to endure an unauthorized operation that is releasing dust, smells, and noise. What is the most disturbing aspect of this situation is a revelation for Mr. Busini. Mr. Busini is the Vice President of Osborn. He stated in the 524 Medina Gazette article where the majority of the concrete of their crushing operation originates from. He said 80% of the concrete comes from the city streets in Medina. He also stated, where thus, oh, he also stated, "We are saving the city money." By this revelation, the city is thus enabling Osborn's continued crushing operation by supplying them and in return are saving money. I understand that we are all looking for an outcome that will be beneficial for all parties. It is also unfortunate that this administration has inherited an incredibly difficult situation. But we cannot, we cannot ignore the 300 households and neighboring businesses that are directly impacted by this every day. What assurances can be made that the residents and businesses' views on this matter are truly going to be taken into account? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Thank you for your comments, and my understanding is that, you know, work is being had on this and investigations have been, been forthcoming, and with air quality tests and whatnot. I believe we're still working on those items and haven't completed them all.
Oh, I, I'm fully aware of 1153.03, the conditional zoning certificate. That is currently being reviewed by the Planning Commission. Also, as part of 115.03, there are three parts that are supposed to be taken into account, which involves not negatively impacting the property or the area that surrounds it, that it's not going to be harmful for the people that are around it. And there is a third point as well. But all three of these points, without any air test or noise test, can clearly show that this is having a negative impact on the entire surrounding area. And due to the fact that due process was not had, and since they were just simply given permission, it completely silenced 300 families or 300 households. No one was allowed to say anything. And now we've had to sit idly for a decade. And the only reason why this was brought to our attention is because a complaint was allegedly filed by someone in regards to another company, and Mr. Mendel had to go out and investigate the problem, and they tell Mr. Mendel, "Why do we need to file for a conditional zoning certificate? Osborn's been doing it for a decade, and they do not have one." And this is the first time we finally officially find out as residents of Medina that this has been happening for a decade. And now we're just supposed to sit and wait. This has been occurring in the system now since approximately, I think around April or May of last year is when this came out. And now we've been sitting here since October with meetings in the Planning Commission, when literally in the very first Planning Commission meeting, the three points of 1153.03 clearly state that this is a major problem. It is going to negatively impact the areas around it. And it's, this just continues. And then the first labyrinth study comes out, and it is revealed within that study, even without having to hold firm noise tests or air tests, that this has a negative impact. They even state that within their study as well. And yet it's tabled again, and they continue the crushing. And now we are in the big season of crushing and cement operations. The mound behind Osborn is massive. And the crushing starts at 7:00 in the morning and continues to 5:00 at night, Monday through Friday. And I can hear it on Saturdays. And I don't know what it is, but there's something going on over there Saturday as well. It's very disturbing, especially when I have a three-year-old son, and now I have to be worried about what is he being exposed to.
Well, thank you for your concerns and comments and giving us an education on the history. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Beth Wagner. I live at 1118 Alexandria Lane. I'm here representing the Medina Half Marathon with Ron Ross, and we just wanted to take the time to thank the city for all of your support for this event. It seems to be large. And it took place on May 27th this past year, or this last month, and we wanted to share just a few numbers with you and a few thank yous. So over the last four years, we've been able to generate enough to donate $80,000 to local Medina-run charitable organizations. We haven't donated yet this year, but we anticipate breaking the $100,000 mark. Our average age of our runners is 38. We had 443 runners from Medina, and we had 1,207 total registered runners. They don't all show up, but that's how many decided they wanted to be there. We had 23 states represented this year, from California to Rhode Island, Texas to Michigan, Florida to Utah, states I assume they're here to visit their family. So it's great they're coming back from Memorial Day weekend, and they've selected our events. This event would not be possible without the support of our mayor, who I know goes to a lot of events, but ours is at 6:30 in the morning. He's there to not only start the half marathon, but the 5K as well, give support to all of our runners, and normally I'm a nervous wreck, and he's so nice and calm, so it's always wonderful to have you there. And to our police departments. Medina City is more than fabulous. Many races across the country do not have anywhere near the safety coverage and compassion that the Medina City Police Department shows our race. Sergeant Markham and Sergeant McNabb are not only the most wonderful professionals to work with, they're kind, they're so giving, and they accept our crazy ideas, and they, and they, and they run with it. So we really appreciate that. And your office, Mr. Mayor, for all that you do to allow us to have permits and deal with us maybe tying up a little bit of traffic on Saturday morning. We couldn't do it without you. We just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, real quick. I know you said appoint a spokesman. So we'll do, let me do this real quick. But I do want to say the permit process is so smooth, and I thank you, Dennis, for that, working with you and Don and your office. And Dennis, to come out on a Saturday morning at 6:30 to start our race, he's done it every year, he's our only starter, that is phenomenal. And a lot of the runners, you know, think that's just wonderful that you do that, and the job is yours as long as you want it to continue. And, and also want to thank, you know, I've seen city council members there, Mr. Lamb has been at our race helping. I see Mr. Simpson there. Was that?
I wasn't running.
No, he's volunteering. And our Finance Director, Keith Durham, and his lovely wife, Deanna, are there every year, helping us in more than just one capacity and several capacities. So we really appreciate that. And I want to thank Dave. Thank you, working with Scott and Brett. It's phenomenal. If you could please tell them that we, we don't have a race without those guys, and you know, your support. So thank you. And, and also I just want to mention, Nino, thank you for all the cones. I need more next year. And I want to thank Jansen for the heads up on the farmer's market and working with you and Nancy on going to Plan B, because the farmer's market was canceled that day. So thank you. Thank you all, the people in this room made this race possible, and we just want to keep it going. Thank you.
So we wanted to give you a little something. Probably not supposed to do this, but so nicely in a way to say Medina, you can think of us when you wear it. And we don't want to forget about you, Keith, as well. Keith not only volunteers, as of course, Marshall, he always still comes out and hands out medals, so we decided it's time for a medal for you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Lee Martin. I live at 963 Pine Tree Court in Medina. And I'm nervous, so bear with me, please. But this is on the Osborn topic again. Because of the noise they create with mostly the front loader every morning, like from 7 till 5 and on Saturdays, I've decided I'm going to move. And because of that, I had a Realtor out at my house to look at my place, because they normally, you know, facilitate you buying a new place and sell your place at the same time. And actually, two Realtors, and they both commented that that's going to be a problem. The noise is going to be a problem selling my house. So I anticipate the value of my house went down because of that. And that directly contradicts the fifth, what is it, 1153, item number three? Actually, two and three, says it won't be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighbor, neighbors. And it's supposed to be harmonious with the general vicinity. It is not. And if this 1153 actually means anything, then they shouldn't be able to operate the way they are. And I know it's hard to kick a multimillion-dollar company out, but perhaps they could do a couple things if they are a multimillion-dollar company to ameliorate the noise and the dust. There's no reason that front loader has to travel. It actually makes my windows shake in my house, and I'm like at least a half a mile away as the crow flies. And there's no reason for that, in my opinion. That would be a muffler or something they can put on it so it doesn't rumble from 7 to 5 every weekday. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes, sir.
Counsel, my name's Charles Reno, R-E-N-O. I live at 673 Cornwallis Court, and that's in the housing development of Liberty Woods. I'm not here to make a comment. I'm here to ask a question. I'm bewildered. If you're driving down the highway, and I see we have the mayor, the former police chief, we have the lieutenant here, and I don't want to put them on the spot, but I'll kind of direct my question to you. I'm driving down the highway, and I get pulled over, and I haven't got a license. If I'm driving down the highway and I get pulled over, and I haven't got a license, hell, I haven't had a license ever. I'm driving without a license. I've been driving without a license for 10 years. And I say, "Don't worry about it, officer." I talked to the governor, and the governor said, "You don't need no stinking license. Go ahead and drive. It's okay." They're going to haul me into court. They're not going to say, "Well, okay." They're going to haul me into court. And I'm going to tell the judge, "I haven't had a license, but that's okay, because some city official told me that I didn't need one." And that judge is going to say, "Okay, Chuck, you keep on driving. Now, you need to go get a license. Need to stop down there, buy your motor vehicles and get a license. But in the meantime, because you've been driving for 10 years, you go right ahead and keep driving." That's what he's going to say, right? That's what he's going to tell you? We all know the answer. Osborne, we've talked about the dust, the pollution, the silica in the air, the noise. We've talked about all that. There's a word we keep missing here. It's legal. Osborne, once this came to light, said, "Well, we don't need a license. City officials told us we didn't need one." But that city official that allegedly told them that is saying he doesn't know nothing about this. Now, maybe he's just covering his tush, or maybe he knows nothing about this. But that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. The point is, they don't have a license. If I say the governor told me I can drive without a license, and the governor says I don't remember it, does that matter? I haven't got a license. They're going to lock me up. The word we keep missing in all this is illegal. Now, once this came to light, Osborne was told, because of the alleged permission, which nobody will own up to, they can continue, in all fairness, continue to operate. They can continue to operate because they've been operating illegally for 10 years now? Because they've been operating for 10 years against the law? We're going to let them keep on operating. Does that sound right in somebody's book? What I want to know is, when we found out we had a company that was operating illegally in our city, why weren't they cited? Not told, "You've been doing it for 10 years, keep doing it." Why weren't they cited? Whose job is it to do that? Why weren't they cited? Why weren't they shut down until they get a license? Who's running this program? Osborne or the city? You've got a company that is operating in your backyard, offending 300 and some households, and they're doing it illegally, and we're sitting here saying, "We're looking into it." We know it's illegal. There's no looking into there. They've either got a license or they haven't. So my question is, why are we allowing them to continue operating? Why haven't we shut them down? And why haven't we cited them for 10 years of illegal operation? Maybe someone can give me an answer.
I'm not sure the answer is going to come tonight, but, because this isn't the forum for it, but we do appreciate your comments, and I believe that your question will be taken, you know, taken by the administration and hopefully answered.
I would hope someone will look into it and figure out whose job it is. We know whose job it is to pull me over if I'm driving without a license for 10 years. Whose job is it to pull me over if I'm running a company without a license for 10 years? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate, ladies, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address counsel at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Chris Darcher, 887 Bunker Hill. And Mr. Russell did a fabulous job of conveying all the issues that most of the residents have around, surrounding Osborne Incorporated. I just wanted to represent the Yorktown subdivision, because I don't think anybody is here from it. I know the other gentleman's from Pine Court, and that's over by Dawn Court off Abbeville, and, you know, they're from Liberty Woods. But I have the utmost respect for the city officials, and I appreciate the job that all of you do. I thank you for all of the things that you take the utmost care in your decisions and So I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Russell and the other comments about Osborne Incorporated that the conditional zoning certificate 115303 should be repealed for the same reasons as Mr. Russell had mentioned and permanently revoked. I also wanted to comment on the trains. They sound like they're in my backyard. So, and this is all hours of the night. So I would challenge anybody in the springtime, when they want to open their windows, to live in my house and listen to the trains. So it's an extremely loud problem that's been going on for years. That's the end of my comments, but I believe that the city officials will handle this with the best interest of the residents, for our health and well-being and welfare, and uphold what the laws are regarding this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address counsel?
John, I'd like to address what was brought up a little bit briefly. By way of a little bit of history, Osborne is located in an industrial district, and in and of itself, because it's industrial, allows heavy manufacturing. Unfortunately, the residents next door are right next door to a heavy manufacturing, industrial zoning district. When Osborne began, the question as to whether those operations actually constitute heavy manufacturing is not like writing a ticket. We have been involved in almost three years' worth of litigation with Fetchco Excavating over whether or not rock crushing even requires a conditional zoning permit, because it's not crystal clear. We just received a decision from the Common Police Court that states that, in fact, in the judge's decision, rock crushing does require a conditional zoning permit. Now, while this is developing, and by the way, when this started, it wasn't anything on the scale that we see now. And part of the problem is the scale, because it's gotten bigger and it has more impact on the residents living next door. We're in the process, well, right now, after three years of litigation, the Common Police Court has backed up the city of Medina in determining that rock crushing is a heavy manufacturing process that requires a conditional zoning permit. Up until this decision last month, that was not clear. We've got that established, and Osborne is in the process of applying for a conditional zoning permit. Now, the Planning Commission will have to make a decision about how to deal with containing or balancing the issues that are presented with this industrial process as compared to the residents living next door. And that's what the conditional zoning permit process is all about. Frankly, in addition, and in a part of the process of that conditional zoning permit, the city has hired an expensive expert testing firm to test the issues with respect to noise, dust, and impact. And the firm that we hired is well-established, has a good reputation, and frankly, doesn't have a dog in the fight. They're going to make an objective determination on these issues. I don't know what those determinations are yet. I haven't seen that expert report. But that expert report will be completed, and it will be presented to the Planning Commission, as the Planning Commission tries to determine what to do about balancing these competing interests as best they can. It may not come out perfectly for everybody involved. It may be that Osborne's not going to be completely happy, and it may be that the residents are not going to be completely happy, which frankly is a typical situation you have, when you have residents' houses located right next to a heavy manufacturing zoning district. But we'll see. We're in the process. This is a far cry from a police officer seeing somebody speeding down the road and being able to make a determination right here and now. Even the definitions of whether this growing rock crushing operation required a conditional zoning permit hasn't been clear, and has actually cost the city a lot of money in trying to litigate that issue with Fetchco. Now, we've got some clarity on that issue now, but we will have the hearing process on the conditional zoning permit. And so I would say, again, when this started, it wasn't what it is now. And that partly explains some of what Greg Hannan was dealing with back in the day when this initially began. So that's where we're at.
Thank you for the clarification on that. Is there anybody else, again, that wishes to address counsel? Yes, sir.
884 Cornell Court. My name's Michael Kennedy. When was that zoned heavy industrial? 10 years ago?
Yes.
Well, when I came here, when that first was going up there, and they had all their plans up there, it was never brought up that was heavy material. That was light industrial. That's what we were led to believe. That's why all those buildings were going up. And then they came in, and all of a sudden, the zoning started switching. So I would just want to get a clarity on that, because as far as when I moved, when they first moved in there, that wasn't the whole process that was being led onto us during those meetings, when they had to blueprints up and stuff. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi. We're back at Conley 664 Terrain Place. I just wanted to also, and I'm not trying to rehash, but I was under the impression from attending the Planning Commission meetings, that it's in fact not heavy manufacturing. It's zoned. That's the reason for the conditional zoning certificate. Am I misunderstanding that? I thought it was light manufacturing, that particular area. Do you have?
Would you like me to address? We have one industrial zoning district in the city of Medina, I-1, that accounts for all permitted and conditionally permitted uses. Permitted uses are determined to be perfectly fine. They're in the normal bounds of an industrial zoning district. And conditionally permitted uses are saying that it's permitted with further review, and then through criteria that's outlined, as is mentioned in Chapter 1135, 1153 of the zoning code. So then it requires an additional conditional zoning review, public hearing process in front of the Planning Commission.
Because it's not within the realm of the way that the industrial zoning is currently written. That's why it takes a further look.
No. It's the wider ranging of any individual type of business that's considered conditionally permitted. Since it's not a normal, narrow operational perspective that any individual use can, operation would have, since the variability can be wider, we need to look at it in a more detailed way, site-specific, operation-specific, and that's the reason for conditional zoning certificate reviews.
So that we're clear, heavy manufacturing is a permitted use in an industrial zone. It just requires that the Planning Commission basically balance the interests of the industry as compared to the impact upon you folks. That's what the process is.
Right. And I'm not arguing that point. I am trying to clarify, what is the zoning in Medina? If there's one zoning, which I-1 is what? Is it all heavy manufacturing?
I-1 covers both light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing.
And then do you, the other thing that I would, because that's not how we've understood this, from attending meetings and reading the literature and everything else that's been presented, is the report from Labyrinth complete? Does the city have it in their possession?
We have not received it yet.
Do you have an anticipated date when you will receive it? Because we've been living through several seasons of crushing that is exponentially increasing because of all of the construction and all of the great things that are going on in Medina, but it's also affecting us in a greater capacity than it was in the past. So we'd like to get some resolution on this. The, I know we're looking into it.
It is immediately imminent. And then once that has occurred, we will review it and make sure that it's, that it's appropriately objective, and then it will become public record, and we will set a time for Planning Commission to continue their meeting, where that's going to be put out into the public record, becomes a packet and open for the meeting at the planning, at the next Planning Commission. There's not a specific date for the Planning Commission, because you just want to get through the report first from Labyrinth Management Group, and then a date will be set. I'll make sure that it's appropriately notified to all interested parties, and that would be the next step after that.
Which leads me to my last question. In the article, it was either in the Gazette or the Plain Deal, or it said, I'm not sure if it was yourself, I don't want to misuse your name in the wrong spot, but there was reference to a special meeting. Will this be one of the regularly scheduled meetings that the Planning Commission plans to address this with that packet when it becomes available? Or will there be some other date set aside for this?
Depending on my discussion with the mayor and law director under administration and with the chairman of the Planning Commission, it may have its own meeting date, other than the kind of regularly scheduled that we have kind of anticipated throughout the year. Just because we, you know, it would probably be best to give it, due to the last two meetings, best to give it its own just agenda, where it's on its own. That date hasn't been set. As I said, whatever date is set will be provided sufficient notice to all interested parties.
And that notice, we should just check the website. Is that how we'll?
I know that a number of the neighborhood residents, concerned residents, have my contact information. You know, you can contact me on a regular basis if you like, or shoot me an email and say, "Can you please put me on the notification list?" And I will, I have a running list already, so.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Oh, yes, sir.
My name is Jim Henze. I live at 885 Cornell Court. My property is one of the properties that boards the Osborne facility. And basically, I just want to validate what the other gentleman was saying, that we had a, back in September of 2015, we did some refinancing of our property, and specifically, the appraiser came in and noticed the noise and said that it adversely affected the price or that we could refinance our home. So there's a financial component, but basically, the reason it's lower to price is basically because of the, adversely our ability to harmoniously, if that's the word we should be using, that's in the statute, that us to be able to use our property that, in the city. And I would just say that, you know, when we look at the website of Medina, and I'm coming to live here, we've lived here for 24 years. We were here before Osborne. And basically, we're not going anywhere, but basically, yeah, we're here to make sure that we can use our property and our yards the way that we see fit, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address counsel? Okay, hearing?
Can I do it one more time?
Well, no, no, we already had one comment. We're going to move forward. Okay. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 8617, a resolution, amending resolution number 5916 passed April 25, 2016, relative to the partnership agreement with the city of Brunswick for grant assistance for the fiscal year 2016 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP Grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and resolution. Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, as you said, this was our agreement with, between the city of Medina and CT consultants to help us execute our CHIP program. Unfortunately, when we did that last year, there was some... Unfortunately, when we did that last year, there was some wording that was left out of the original agreement. So, Exhibit B would incorporate the appropriate information, text, so that we can actually execute a portion of the project. The reason for the emergency clause is so that we can begin, we can get this approved and put into the agreement as soon as possible, so we can begin our home, home building repair activity as soon as possible as part of the program. Actually, it's the PY16 allocation, not chip, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on emergency clause and/or the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Resolution 86-17 passes six zero.
Resolution 8717, a resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Medina, on behalf of the state of Ohio, the borrower, to reimburse its stormwater street fund 108 for the Wadsworth Road waterline Phase II project with the proceeds of the tax-exempt debt of the state of Ohio.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton?
Thank you. The Ohio Public Court Commission annually gives us grants for various projects. They also have a loan program. Counsel last year authorized us to apply for a zero-interest loan to complete the waterline, the Phase II of the Wadsworth Road waterline project. This is simply a declaration that we will accept the loan and that we will pay it back.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordnance 88-17 passes six zero.
Ordnance 8917, an ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact current replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion. I guess this is our annual update of our codified ordinances, and we modify them as the ordinances are passed and update our book. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Resolution 87-17 passes six zero.
Ordnance 8817, ordinance, amending ordinance number 16716, passed December 12, 2016, amendment to the 2017 budget.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The court wishes to transfer some excess funds from one of their court funds that are funded by fees to another one. They have the authority to, but they need the appropriation.
Thank you. Any further comment? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordnance 90-17 passes six zero.
We have one item, ordinance number 9117, to add to the agenda.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I move to add ordinance 9117 to tonight's agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on adding ordinance 9117? Will the clerk please call the roll on adding ordinance 9117?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Ordnance 9117, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for fire services with Medina Township.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. My office and Fire Chief Painter and I have been working with Medina Township to review the possibility of the city providing contractual fire services for their township. As the council's well aware, but for the public's benefit, the city has provided contractual fire services to the township of Montville, which is larger in size, population, for over five decades. And we took the time to analyze the calls in the past three years, both fire and EMS-related calls that the fire department went to, analyzed which stations between the three in the city, the one in Montville, and the two in Medina Township would be best suited to staff. The city currently staffs three members during the day at eight-hour shifts to complement three full-time members, and then we staff four members in the afternoon shift from four to midnight. So, this would provide Monday through Friday, 16-hour coverage. With this addition to Medina Township, we're proposing adding an additional staff member during the day for a total of eight, and the second shift going from four members to six members for a total of six, and dividing that staffing between the Nettleton Road Station, which is in Medina Township, just off of 18 and adjacent to the highway, and the other location would be our Station One, which is near the Regal Cinema. The city will provide these services at a cost that is 36% what the township paid for fire services last year, and the fire services will provide equal or better service to the township and their residents, and the city is prepared to take over as soon as the council approves this, and as soon as the township approves this, which is expected at their meeting this Thursday, and therefore, we're asking for the emergency clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, Mr. Osman may want to speak to this as well.
Yes. Yes, we were looking at, we formed a committee to look at the needs of the fires, the fire service in Medina Township. That committee met several times during the last year, and we determined that we needed to really look at other options, because what they have done is, they said that they came up with some options, that included a $3.5 million fire station, adding three or, you know, about three mills to the taxes, and also, they wanted us to commit to never considering either collaboration of any sort with the city or Montville. So, we decided to look, you know, look into the contractual agreement after we looked, after we saw in the paper, in the Gazette, that what Montville was getting, and it looked like a pretty good thing, and we think it'll be good for the township.
And just for clarification, you're the Medina Township trustee?
I am Bill Osman, I'm chairman of the Board of Medina Township Trustees.
Thank you.
And we thank everybody for their efforts.
I think this has been discussed many, many years. And we hope that the goal, of course, is to provide the best service possible to residents. When I say residents, it doesn't matter what political subdivision or boundaries you live in, we're all residents. And as long as we can provide the best service possible at the quickest or the most efficient response times, at a most cost-effective way, I think that's what everybody expects out of their elected officials, is to try to come up with collaborative efforts to provide a better service to the residents. And I think this is one example of how we do that. And I'm glad that it has happened, and I'm glad that we're moving in the direction of having more participants to try to do a fire district in the future to provide these services to our residents, because I don't think, as a resident myself, I don't expect anything less from our elected officials to provide these services. So, I congratulate everybody on their efforts, and I think this is a good step forward. Is there any other discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Ordnance 91-17 passes six zero.
Counsel comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
Just a couple of things here, I know everybody wants to get off to a basketball game. First of all, I do want to make a comment with regard to the way our policemen interact with the community. A couple of Saturdays ago, I had the privilege to attend the Let's Make a Difference Medina sign-up, the one that Michelle, and her last name escapes me right now.
Powell.
Thank you. Puts on to help those who need the help during the summertime with other activities. We had four police officers at that, attending that event. Lenny Cotesco, Ed Kenny, they were with the crowds, interacting with the children, working, doing whatever the kids wanted them to do. And then, there was Derek Crooks and Mike English that were taking a couple of the kids to school and basketball. They were doing an excellent job out there. If anybody ever says anything that our police don't interact with our community completely, they're liars. These guys were, they were just like the kids out there, and I thought it was great. And I want to commend Lieutenant Burke Beckler and his staff for the fine work, and thank you. Okay, and then, in walking around the community recently, I had an opportunity to talk to some residents in Ward Four, and they had nothing but high praises to say for the sanitation workers, and, you know, please, their group that takes care of them, they're very much appreciative of the work they do. And one more thing, for the past seven-plus years, I've had the honor and privilege of representing everybody as Ward, or as a council at large, and I'm going to put my hat in the ring for another four years, so I hope everybody votes for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional counsel comments? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two quick things. First of all, Mr. Osman, thank you for attending tonight. Thank you and your fellow trustees, and the mayor and his staff for putting together this agreement for the, joining the city of Medina for your fire service. I see nothing but positive effects with this, and the outcome of, in the future, as we discussed, being able to form a fire district would be just wonderful for all of our residents of Montville, Medina, and Medina Township. So, thanks again for your hard work, and I know it's not been easy. The second thing I would like to say, and I won't say anything more about this after tonight, but if you haven't made it to Medina's new municipal pool yet, you gotta take a chance. The folks on this side of the room, your administration and department heads just did a phenomenal job. I mean, it was a long process, we all hated to see the pool close several years ago because of the deterioration, and it was a long discussion process with the administration and members of council, but it's done, it's open, and it's spectacular. So, pick a sunny day and go down and have a picnic and enjoy it, because I think you're really going to be impressed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments? Mr. Colzar?
Mr. President, thank you. Couple of comments to Medina Township. I've always been a supporter of collaboration and a fire district, so I know we've tried to hit this hurdle in years past, and I appreciate the trustees coming together to hopefully have consensus to move forward on that. And I want to thank the administration too for working diligently to make this happen. My main concern as a council member is to make sure people are safe, and if we can do it at a more efficient manner, that's even better. And I, just like our president said, I think the residents expect that. Secondly, the pool, I was able to be there grand opening day, and it was nice to see a line of residents and kids wanting to come in there. And I know it was a challenge to get finished, and I do appreciate everybody that took part in that, and especially, like Councilman Simpson said, the administration stepping up to make that happen.
To that point, though, anybody who didn't see it missed one fantastic cannonball from Mark.
That's why I was patting him on the back, because first person to do the cannonball at the new pool was our constable, Mark Colasar.
I was going to leave that out, but...
Not with us.
Actually, you can get online and see it, I'm not sure.
We have the pictures, I think, don't we?
But sincerely, I know it was a challenge, it was good dialogue that we went through to get to that point. There were other ideas out there, but I just want to appreciate everybody that took part in that. And this is a great community. If you were out from Memorial Day Parade and all the services, and we talk about our police department and all the other departments we have out there that really, truly have the city's and their residents' best interests. I can't really comment on the Osborn situation myself. My employer actually does business with Osborn, so I'd be abstaining on anything that comes in front, but I feel that our administration will do everything possible to keep your quality of life as best we can, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a big, big weekend of music in Medina this weekend. I don't know if anybody was at any of those things, and thousands of people on South Court Street, and thousands of people in the park to hear music, and we had lots of supporters and lots of donors, lots of sponsors, and a lot of help to put it together. But I particularly want to thank the city for their assistance with the stage and some of the logistics, because without that, without that help, I'm not quite sure we would have gotten all that. As Paul was saying, we had police officers at both of those events, and they just do a terrific job. And sometimes, you don't pay attention to that, because you just expect it to happen, and you expect folks to show up, and expect folks are going to pitch in and do what they want to do. And my experience with this administration, as with, I think, most people in the community, has been, everybody always does show up and do their job really, really well. And finally, Mike Wright and Jensen and other people in the administration, I want to tell you, I'm absolutely thrilled to hear those numbers for attendance and income at the pool. Nothing, it is one of the most joyous occasions, I think, I've ever had, and my experience here was at the opening, when, you know, Mark jumped in, and to see those kids lined up, and then to hear you confirm that this has been, this has been successful. And as I've said all along, yeah, the process was long, but I think the process was right. I think the process had to be what it was, and that's how we got here. We came together with a lot of different ideas, we looked at all those ideas, and then we determined what we were going to do, and you guys, you know, pulled it off, and it is a beautiful facility that will serve this community for a very long time, and most of all, is going to make a lot of kids really happy in the summer when the weather's hot and the pool is not.